Go. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, September 3rd. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any declaration of conflicts today? I might add that we have Board Member Sin online, as well as one of our Planning and Heritage planners is online, Michael, so he'll be giving his reports remotely. So, moving on to approval of the agenda. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Chris Fournay. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Adoption of the minutes from our last meeting of Thursday, August 29th. Okay, moved by Bobby, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor? Wonderful. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we can move right on to our reports. And our first one is 130 Fitzroy Street. It's for a variance. And it's our, welcome to our new planner, Stephanie. She will be giving this report, but I'll turn it over first to our manager, David, who will do a brief introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. And again, I'll be short and sweet. I'd just like to introduce and have everyone welcome our new Planner One, Stephanie McDonald, who just joined us in the last week. And again, Stephanie is pretty new to the city, but she's done some great work so far, and she's got two, first two applications that she'll be handling here tonight. So I'll turn it over to Stephanie, and she can take it from there.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I'm here to present the major variance located at 130 Fitzroy Street, PID number 344234. A request for a major variance was received to allow for a painted mural on the interior wall of a parking garage. Murals or any sign painted upon a building or structure within the 500 lot area are otherwise prohibited as per Section 47.3.1P of the zoning and development bylaw. Sorry, I didn't start that right away. The subject property is an interior lot with frontage on both Fitzroy Street and Kent Street, and is located within the downtown Main Street zone, which is adjacent to mixed-use commercial and residential core urban development. The subject property contains a four-story parking garage structure known as the Fitzroy Parkade. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the zoning bylaw, written notification was sent, sorry, written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meter of the subject property on August 15th, 2024. A total of 55 letters were sent to the property owners notifying them of their proposed application, requesting comment and feedback. The notification period ended on August 29th, and no responses were received. And as you can see here, this photograph is the proposed mural that will be going on the interior wall. Through review of the application, it is determined that the proposed mural would add to the vibrancy and cosmetic appeal of the local downtown Main Street area, and would not have any negative impacts on the surrounding properties. However, an approved permit will be required prior to the installation of the mural. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages the Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as 130 Fitzroy Street, PID number 344234, be approved to allow for the establishment of a painted mural on the interior wall of an existing parking garage structure on the subject property, whereas murals or any sign painted upon a building or structure within the 500 lot area are otherwise prohibited. I will turn it back over to the Chair for any questions and discussion.
Great, thank you for that, Stephanie. Your first report, one down, many more to go. Yeah, I'm gonna just open it up to the Board if you have any questions. And I will note that, that our Arts Advisor Officer Doug Dumey is here. So if anyone else have any questions, it has been vetted through the Arts Advisory Board, and staff is recommending that we, we support this and move it on to council. But any questions?
I'd have more comment. I think it looks great.
Yeah.
And I think it's awesome to brighten up that parkade. I have no problem moving forward with staff's recommendation to put the motion on the floor.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor from, from Counselor McCabe. Do I have somebody to second it? Oh, Jackie's going to second it, or did you have a question? Okay. So, the resolution is on the floor to accept Planning and Heritage Department's recommendation to Planning Board to move on to council to accept the major variance for the subject property at 130 Fitzroy Street for a painted mural. Question called, and all those in favor? Oh, you've got a question?
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great project, too. It's lovely. Maybe can I direct the question through to Doug?
You can try me first.
Well, if you can answer, what's, what's the, there's, I love the illustrator. What's all the wording part on there? Is that just there for decorative purposes? Are there gonna be some kind of story behind? I don't know what it is. There's a little text box down there in the right. Maybe Doug, if you could shed a little light, unless you can, Deputy, shed some light on what that's, what that's all about?
Hmm.
Yeah, so thanks for the question.
So to the Chair through Counselor Beck, there, there is a plan to have a plaque on the mural that has a bit of a description of the artwork, and a bit of a bio of the artist, and a QR code that takes you to a website that has more information. So the full description of the work would be there, all the symbolism would be described. And I was just talking to the artist about what that panel will look like. The city also has public art signage at some of the public art pieces around town. We're currently working to update those by the fall, so we'll have a new design. So I'm just talking to the artist if they would prefer to kind of design their own and have it go to their own page, or if they'd like to have it go to the city's public art website where more details can be found. So ultimately, it will be an acrylic or a metal plaque that will be durable, that will, can be replaced if necessary, and that just has a bit of information for those who are curious.
Lovely.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, your worship.
So Doug, while you're there, if I could ask through the Chair to Doug, Doug Dumey. Doug, I'm just looking for the name of the artist. Is it in the background?
Hannah Bowman.
What's that?
Hannah Bowman.
Is that, is that in the package? I'm just looking for the name.
Hannah Bowman.
So Doug, is, I, I know that we've had the Erica Rutherford that was down at the, down at the old triangle, and that has been removed, right? And that was on the outside, so anyone that was driving north on Great George Street. So I'm just trying to get a perspective here. Is it on the inside, where when I drive in, I'll see it? Or if I'm driving down Kent Street, I'll see it from Kent Street?
Thank you for the question. So to the Chair through the Mayor. The artwork is planned for the interior pedestrian exit of the Fitzroy Parkade onto Kent Street. So if you are driving, it's a one-way street. If you're driving down Kent Street, you won't see the mural from the outside. It's for the interior. So it's meant more specifically to be more for the people walking in and out of the parkade, and those who are coming down Kent Street going towards the west. So that's, for a few reasons, the artist did reach out originally looking for a location for the mural, as they had already received funding for it, and a few locations were considered. This one is kind of interesting, just because people who enter and exit the parkade, the artist in the description that they provided me, mentioned that the window slats in that wall are quite interesting, because they have the kind of thematic association of shining light on a topic that isn't necessarily discussed. I don't think it's mentioned in the package, but the mural is funded by Innovation through PEI. They had a program that was the Gender-Based Violence Grant, which is administered by that department. So this funding relates to that theme. So that location was ideal also, just because historically, you know, parkades are sometimes viewed as places that are unsafe. So it's a way to brighten the area and make people feel a bit more comfortable, and make that space a little bit more vibrant.
And, and the artist's name again, Doug?
It's Hannah Bowman.
Okay. So Doug, looking at the public art that we've placed around the city, you know, I talk, I think of the, the artwork that's on the west, west wall of the fire, Shellington Fire Station, Station Number One, has drawn a lot of great praise, and then others' work that we have around the city. And you know that we spent close to half million dollars on the facade there in Fitzroy, Fitzroy Parkade, because it had to go through a design review, and we agreed that we would go with an artist, an artist rendition of something that would make it less of a, the facade of a parking garage. Is, is there any way that we can add more art to that? Whether it's on the south wall onto Kent Street, or on the west wall coming down Kent Street? Like, I, I think that we have an opportunity, and there's a large effort.
I can answer that.
Madam Chair, there's a huge effort to turn this Kent Street into a entertainment area. That's why they're gonna be looking, doing with the banners and so forth. So Madam Chair, if you can answer, that'd be great.
I can answer that. It's not part of this application.
No, no.
And I'm sure that the Arts Advisory Board, through Doug, will continue to fulfill their goal for more public art. But I don't, I, I think, I think right now, I don't think it's a question that is pertinent to this report.
No.
So we can just hope that we see more come through this department, as, as Doug fulfills his mandate.
No, this, this, this report that we're discussing now will inspire more. I'm just asking that that art would be more reflective on the outside, facing the outside, than the inside, so that's my point. I, I fully agree that what we're speaking about now is to deal with this issue at hand, but going forward, hopefully, we'll have more of it taking place. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for that, your worship. So the, yes, go ahead, Sin.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I have a question for the Planner.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, for, this is maybe David or Stephanie can answer this. Do we have a public art policy which is linked to the official plan and the bylaw?
I can answer that. We, we do have a public art policy, and that's through, that's through Doug's department. So we do have that, and it can be found on our website. And if you don't, if you've not seen it, certainly we can have that shared to you, Sin.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, on the 500 lot area, and perhaps you can answer this, Madam Chair. Do we have any specific, I know this is a major variance, so it's not allowed within 500 lot area. I'm wondering if there is, if there is any change to the, to that aspect of, you know, in, of the planning, where we allow public art in 500 lot area.
So right now, in our zoning and development bylaw, it's not permitted, which is why these one-off applications come through. But it's certainly something we can highlight after we approve the official plan, and we embark on changes to our zoning and development bylaw over the next year.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Beck.
I think it was also that it, we couldn't do any art without the approval of the Arts Advisory Board, and this did go through the Arts Advisory Board. They're approving it, bringing it to us, so if I'm understanding that process correctly.
Yeah, it goes, it goes to their committee for a recommendation. Yeah, to, and then on to the committee.
So it, it, by and large, is not prohibited. It's prohibited unless it's approved by the Arts Advisory Board.
The.
In the 500 lot area.
Yeah, the, the Arts Advisory Board approves all public art. However, in this case, this is not just about, the Arts Advisory Board has already approved the public art, but this Board and council has to approve the application for a variance. So if this was already in a permitted area, it wouldn't be here. Yeah, if that makes sense.
And just to add to that, Madam Chair, again, we are going through a overhaul of our official plan. So this discussion we're having is not just about this art, piece of artwork. It's about anything that could happen, or that we could be putting up here in the, in the 500 lot. So I'm glad that Dawn is on the line to listen to some of this discussions, because that should be part of the overhaul of our official plan. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, all those in favor of moving this on to council with a positive recommendation? And Sin, are you in favor?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much for that. We can move on to our, oh, we can move on to our next report, and it is Stephanie again. And this is 133 Queen Street, and it is a request for a major variance to allow for the establishment of a new fascia sign. I fix it to the Queen Street-facing portion of the building. So over to you, Stephanie.
For my second application this evening, I'll be presenting a major variance located at 133 Queen Street, PID number 340240. A request for major variance was submitted to allow for the establishment of a new fascia sign on the Queen Street-facing portion of the building at a height above the first row of the second-story windows. As per Section 47.12.4 of the zoning and development bylaw, fascia signs must be installed below the bottom of the second-story windows within the downtown Main Street zone. The subject property is an interior lot containing a three-story commercial building, and is located on the west side of the Queen Street South, sorry, is an interior lot, containing a three-story, and is located on the west side of the Queen Street south of the intersection of Graff. side of the Queen Street South of the intersection of Grafton Street and located within the downtown Main Street zone adjacent to mixed-use commercial and residential core development. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on August 15, 2024, written notification was circulated to property owners within 100 meters of the subject property. A total of 39 letters were sent to property owners notifying them of the proposed application, requesting comment and feedback. The notification period ended on the 29th, on August 29, and one response in support of this proposed fascia sign was received. And I'm going to try and get this arrow on here. Right there is the proposed fascia sign, and you can see the neighboring property also has one, which was previously approved. Through the review of the application, it is determined that the proposed fascia sign would help promote and support and establish local business and would not have any negative impacts on the surrounding properties. However, an approved permit will be required prior to the installation of the fascia sign. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages the planning board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property identified as 133 Queen Street, PID number 340240 be approved to allow for the establishment of a new fascia sign affixed to the Queen Street-facing portion of the building at a height above the first row of the second-story windows, whereas fascia signs must be erected below the bottom of the second-story windows in the downtown Main Street zone as per Section 47.12.4 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, unless the building is four stories, four or more stories in height. We will turn it back over to the chair for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Stephanie. And this is one of those examples, again, as we embark on the changes to our zoning and development bylaw, and, and with increased heights, with the probability of increased heights over the, the coming years, probably an amendment to this might be something we look at down the road. But for today, we do need, we do need a, a planning board to either accept staff's recommendation, and either way, this moves on to council. But I'll open it up first for any questions, if anyone has any.
I'm just okay to support staff's recommendation. I don't think there's any issue.
Okay. So Counselor McCabe has put a resolution on the floor to support staff's recommendation, and Jackie is second. And any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll listen. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your, like, go ahead, Counselor Beck.
How did the, how did the first, I mean, I noticed MRSB is, I guess my, my reticence on this is that we end up with a bunch of, I mean, there's conceivably six other spaces there. We have MRSB, which I, I never would have, to be honest with you, hardly even noticed before. But, you know, if you go, start going in under the other windows there, you start putting up a whole bunch of them there, all of a sudden, you've, you're changing the complexion of the street. So I'm, I'm not really, I think the, I think the original guidelines were in there for a reason. I think they make, I think they make sense. I think not having a bunch of billboards or signs or fascia, fascia, or fascia, whatever we say it, signs up there, I don't think it adds to the streetscape myself. And I would, I would, I, I'm going to be voting against it because I, I just don't think that we, I don't think that they're required, and I think that we stick with the original resolution. People free to vote whatever way you like, but I know MRSB was approved. I don't know whether it was approved under a similar variance. I don't know how that worked. But I'm, I'm going to vote against the, having more of them. Because I, I'd be, I, I think if we get a whole bunch of them up there, I think it changes the nature of the streetscape. And it kind of goes again, what's what the original intent of the bylaw was for. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Counselor Beck. Any other comments or questions? I know the resolution is on the floor. So all those in favor of supporting staff's recommendation? Sin?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Counselor, oh, can I see the hands again? All those in favor? So that's everyone except for his worship and Counselor Beck are not for, in favor of that. So this will move on to council, and, and so the board has accepted staff's recommendation with two opposed. So thank you very much for that. Okay, we can move on to our next report. Thank you, Stephanie, by the way. Next report is, is report coming from you, from David Gundrum, our manager of development planning, and it's unaddressed property Patterson Drive and Promenade Acadian, PID 442400, for major variance. So over to you, David.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ankauf. And as mentioned, this is a application for major variance for unaddressed property identified as PID 442400 at the corner of Patterson Drive and Promenade Acadian. Request is for a major variance to establish a group home in the medium-density residential R3 zone, which does not meet the 300-meter minimum distance separation requirement from an existing group home as per Section 5.8.2A of the Zoning and Development Bylaw. The property is located, as mentioned, at the corner of Patterson Drive and Promenade Acadian, located within the R3 zone. It's adjacent to existing higher-density residential development to the north on the parcel here, being a four-story apartment building. Subject property is currently vacant and undeveloped and contains no buildings or structures. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, written notification was sent to all property owners on August 15, 2024, within 100 meters of the subject property. Total of 15 letters were sent to residents advising them of the application to solicit comments and feedback. And to date, there have been two responses received from members of the public, with one expressing support for the application and one expressing concern for parking and snow clearing during the winter months. If the variance is approved, the applicants would perceive, would, would proceed with a building and development permit to develop the site as shown here. They're proposing that this group home would be a single-story structure that would include a fenced playground area and a paved parking area shown here with proposed road access onto Patterson Drive. In terms of our evaluation of the application, just some positives are that the proposed variance would allow for creation of a new use, which would fulfill a community service need for a vulnerable group or population. If approved, the variance would also allow for, allow for utilization of an underutilized or vacant site. Some neutral comments are that a building and development permit would be required upon variance approval, and that confirmation of the road access would have to be confirmed through a road access permit issued by City Public Works. So to conclude, Planning and Heritage Department is encouraging planning board to recommend to council to, that the following major variance for the unaddressed property identified as PID 442400 at the corner of Patterson Drive and Acadian Drive be approved, and that is to permit a group home for the custodial care of up to five youth residents to operate on the subject property, PID number 442400, being located closer than 300 meters from an existing group home, whereas the Zoning and Development Bylaw under Section 5.8.2A requires that a group home maintain a minimum separation distance of 300 meters from another group home for those areas that are not within the 500 lot area. So that is a summary of the application, our recommendation to planning board, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, David. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Quick question. Wondering if, if anybody knows the original intent around the bylaw of having a separation distance of 300 meters from another group home? Like, what was the purpose of that when the bylaw was originally written?
What a great question. I'm going to get David to answer it, though. Thank you.
Through the chair, Jackie, I'll try to answer as best I can. I think, I think the logic there, if you will go back in time, was that depending on the nature of the occupants or residents of a group home, there might be, there could be community impacts depending on the nature of the service. And I think it's for that reason that that minimum separation distance of 300 meters was put in place, was to avoid a concentration of these type of uses all in one area, or at least to give the public, i.e., you know, members of planning board, members of council, the opportunity to weigh in on whether it's appropriate to have more than one group home that close to each other. Also, it's for areas outside of the 500 lot area, which means that you're predominantly talking about a lot of established neighborhoods, low dense, some low-density, single-family neighborhoods where it may or may not be appropriate to put a group home. So it's really for that reason, I think, that, that that rule was written into the bylaw initially, would be my, my guess, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. I think, Sin, did you have a question?
No, Madam, yes, Madam Chair, but my question has been asked by member Jackie, so it's, I was really asking about, what was the rationale for that 300 meters distance?
Great. Counselor McCabe.
And I think probably goes back to, too, group homes typically had 10-plus people in a home, where now they're looking at moving towards more smaller option homes with less numbers. So I would say that, that makes sense when we think about that, too.
So, oh, go ahead.
We're, we're probably going to ask the same thing, I think.
Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
I think Sin had a question, and I'll say, no, he already, again, okay. The, the other group home in the area is, is it, is it on the, this worship and I are just looking up in the Google map there, is that coming off the bypass on the Pioneer Drive? There's a group home right there. And then is there not a, another apartment building beside that? Yeah, that's the, yeah, the, what's it called? Something Place? I can't remember. Not Martha's Place. No, it's a different building. It's there, okay. All right. Okay, I'm just trying to, I, I'm trying to conceptualize this in my mind. Okay. And the other one is just a normal, standard group home? Is it that's off on Pioneer Drive?
It's for intellectually challenged adults that live in that building.
For adults, and this one is more for youth. Okay, thank you.
Great. Any, oh, go ahead, Lee.
Is that a ditch that's behind, behind the building itself? Is that an active ditch? And, and if it is, then my only suggestion would be to remove the snow in the wintertime. You would probably want to put that in with the approval, that the snow be removed from the property, because otherwise, they'll, they'll be pushing it down there, the ditch will be filled in, and you'll have no water problems all winter. So just, just, if it, if it is an active ditch.
David, is that something that can be incorporated into this, as Lee pointed out?
Through the chair, I'm not sure we, I mean, the board could ask for whatever conditions it sees fit that we could recommend on a variance. Just what I'm aware of is that there is an easement for that ditch, that, that, there is an easement for access, care, and maintenance of this as a, like a stormwater management feature that runs across the property between the two roadways. I'll also note, this wasn't noted during my presentation, but the applicant is P E I Housing Corporation, and Department of Social Services would be the operators here, and I'm sure as good stewards of their development and their operation that they would want to make sure that there's no issues during all seasons, whether it be snow clearing or otherwise. So I don't think there's a whole lot of cause for concern there because it will be the province, the province operating this site. Again, that being said, the board is free to apply or ask for any conditions as it sees fits, sees fit, and those could be flowed through to council for consideration on, on the future vote on the application, so, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for that. When we get to the resolution on the floor, we can discuss whether or not we want to add that to it. Go ahead, Counselor.
So, Madam Chair, just a question to David. It's, it's, actually, the, the location is, is very appropriate because just across the street is the entrance into the new mental health acute care campus. If you go across the street there, property number, you can see that that leads into, so this 300-meter distance, is it just for group homes? I'm just trying to get a clarification on that, or is it for any of the related facilities? Madam Chair, maybe you can answer.
I can't answer that, but it is a good question. I'd like to know the answer, too. Go ahead.
Through the chair, your worship, that is a good question. And the way the bylaw is written, that 300-meter MDS, I call it minimum distance separation, is only with respect to group homes and group home limited, and that, that's it. So no other defined uses in the bylaw does that apply to?
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Great, thanks for that. Any other questions? So we have a recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Department to encourage planning board to recommend to council to approve the major variance. Now, we also have, Lee has suggested that we add something into that that would address the snow buildup and, and possible flooding in the ditch. So does somebody want to add that to the resolution? And how would we word that, David, if that was the case?
Through the chair, I'm just thinking out loud here, I guess some suggested wording would be that any management of accumulated snow on site is not to infringe upon the function of the drainage dish, ditch, something to that effect, in so many words, yeah.
All right. So does somebody want to move that? Moved by Counselor McCabe, second by Lee. So the resolution is on the floor. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sin, are you in favor?
In favor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. We can move on to our next report. And this is for Michael, and it is 26 Exhibition Drive, PID 880559, request for a major variance. So over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm presenting a variance request for 26 Exhibition Drive. If we could go to the next slide there? Is the slide updated? It's looking like it's still on the cover photo. Perfect. This is a request for a major variance to allow for a physical addition to an existing warehouse and distribution center in the light industrial M1 zone, having a rear setback of 3.5 meters, which is roughly 10 feet, roughly 11 feet, whereas 7.5 meters is the otherwise required setback. If we could move to the next slide there? The property is an interior light industrial lot, fronting Exhibition Drive on the northern, on the north side. Located in the light industrial M1 zone adjacent to existing light industrial mixed-use development, the subject property is currently developed and contains an existing two-story industrial warehouse that is roughly 720 square meters. They are looking to add a rear addition for this project that will bring it back from the back of the existing building. If we could go to the next slide. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on August 15, 2024, written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters of the subject property. A total of 16 letters were sent to residents advising them of the application to solicit comments and feedback. No responses were received. I just want to note something because I believe it went through a council or office. We did have questions about this application, but all were resolved without wanting to submit feedback. If we could meet, go to the next slide. So if you're looking at the parcel here, you can see the existing building hatched with a single line. The existing building kind of ends roughly where the required setback would, would end. They're wanting to move into that proposed area because it's really the only area on the lot they have. Before the building towards Exhibition Drive, you'll see there's parking if you look at a satellite image, whereas in the back, this kind of unused space. So they're looking to expand into that space with a building that's roughly the same height and setbacks as their existing building. If we can move to the next slide. So some analysis, this enables the expansion, expansion of an existing business without requiring a move, and it enables it on this lot. It will not result in a change of use. The proposed structure is in keeping with the side setback of the existing building. The proposed structure is in keeping with the side setback of the existing building, and the approved permit will be, an approved permit will be required prior to construction to review for building code and to review against this variance as well. We didn't identify any shortcomings. Again, there was no letters received as part of the feedback, so we didn't identify any shortcomings, because otherwise it is largely just an expansion of the existing use. If we can move to the next slide. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance be subject, for the subject property identified as 26 Exhibition Drive, PID 880559, be approved, to permit a rear yard setback of 3.5 meters or 10.8 feet for a proposed addition to an existing warehouse and distribution center, whereas a rear yard setback of 7.5 meters is otherwise required. And I'll hand it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Michael, for your report. Any questions? Go ahead, Jackie.
Quick question. I was wondering, I know that residents were able to submit feedback on this proposal, on this application, or like this proposed development, but I'm wondering if any of the commercial neighbors had any avenue in which to submit feedback on this, like looking at the businesses on either side? Was there any, is there any avenue for them to submit feedback on this, or their concerns, if there are any? Does that make sense?
It absolutely does. Our process is to contact landowners within 100 meters, or 100 feet of the development. And so in that case, we would expect that they would pass it down to tenants if they, it's kind of their responsibility, as the bylaw says we have to do it to landowners. They are welcome to submit feedback, most certainly. If we receive feedback during that time, we will consider it. But the bylaw, and I believe the planning act beyond it, requires us to send it to landowners. So that's the process that occurred. We would have accepted and read the feedback and included it in the report, but none was received.
So it's landowner feedback, not necessarily resident feedback?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's always, letters are always sent to property owners, not to residents. Yeah.
And just point of information, Madam Chair, it is 100 meters. It's under like-
Can remember off the top of my head. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Sin, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have a recommendation from staff to support the application for the major variance. So do I have anyone that would like to put that on the floor? Counselor Back, seconded by Chris Fournier. So the resolution is on the floor. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sin, are you in favor?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, Michael, for that. And we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which I believe will be another report from Michael, and this is 73 Malpec Road, PID 388173. Again, a request for a major variance. Go ahead, Michael.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. If we can move on to that first slide with text. Perfect. So this is a request for a major variance to allow for an expansion of an existing seniors' care home, known as a nursing home in our bylaw, Andrews of Charlottetown, in the institutional zone, to allow for a maximum number of bedrooms of 162, whereas the, based on the existing lot area, the rules would dictate that they would have a maximum of 146 bedrooms available on this property. Essentially, the way that the bylaw is written, they have a mac, they have a rate of bedrooms that are allowable, based off the size of the lot. And so even though they're kind of respecting setbacks and stuff along those lines, this is about the area of the lot and the number of bedrooms they can have on it. So if we can move to the next slide. The property is an interior institutional lot, fronting onto Malpec Road on the west side. Located in the institutional zone adjacent to the existing institutional and low-density residential development, subject property is currently developed and contains an existing two-story seniors' care home, 3,040 square meter space, and they're looking to add an addition to the north side. If we could go to the next slide. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on August 15, 2024, written notification was sent to property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property. A total of 24 letters were sent to residents advising them of the application and to solicit comments for feedback. We received no responses. Once again, similar to the last one, I just wanted to note that we did have quite a few questions that came in, but those were all resolved without submitting feedback. If we could go to the next slide. If you're looking from above, this is the proposed addition. So the hatched area on the north side of the parcel is where they are planning on, they're doing their planning work on adding an addition. As you'll see, in terms of the, looking at this image, on the north side, you'll see the cabin, I forget the business name, but just south of the bypass, there's a set of cabins that are part of a motel. And then on the, on the west side, you'll see some residential parcels. This addition is going to be on that north side, near the commercial properties. There is one section of it that will be closer to the residential on the west, though all setbacks will be met by this application. The required setback is sticks to the rear, and that will be well over, this will be a 10-meter setback in the rear, and the requirement on the side is well over as well, and we're looking at six meters there. So they are respecting all setbacks, they're just looking for the density. Next slide. So when we were doing the analysis, this enables an expansion of existing business, and it enables the construction of nursing home beds, which is a goal within the official plan, mentioned in two sections. There are some neutral aspects. The proposed structure meets all bylaw setback requirements, and the approved permit will be required prior to construction to review for building code and to review against this variance. If we could go to the next slide. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as 73 Malpec Road, PID 388173, be approved, to reduce the minimum lot area required for the number of bedrooms permitted for a nursing home, to allow for a maximum of up to 162 bedrooms. And I'll pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Michael. Any questions? Counselor Back.
It was indicated here that the deadline to submit written comments was today, Tuesday, September 3.
Yep.
Was there any received? I might have missed that.
No, we did not. We didn't receive any by that date. They had until 4:30. That being said, we did have some calls and questions about it, but they were all resolved through, just kind of phone calls and emails.
Okay. And these units would be similar to what's currently in Andrews there? One bedroom or two? Is it, is it the same sort of format, like?
Michael, do we get into-
They're not, oh, sorry, I thought you'd finish there. I'll let you finish.
Do we, do we get into what the format is inside? Counselor Back-
No.
-has that question, so just wanted to clarify.
Just a zoning, just a zoning.
So at this point, we don't have a final, like, architectural set that would show building, like, bedroom layouts. That being said, it is an expansion of their current business practice. So my understanding is that it would be similar to what's, I'm not familiar necessarily with their current business practice on the ground of what kind of bedrooms they offer, but the bedroom total is the only kind of restriction we have in the bylaw to be able to kind of create certain outcomes. The bedroom total of 162 is what they're asking for. Not necessarily sure if there'll be any changes to the layouts or anything like that, but I assume a modernization, right? If there's a new business practice that nursing homes would, would kind of support, that may be involved, but I wouldn't say beyond, anything beyond what a nursing home would normally entail.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Sin, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair, I don't.
So, could I just, Madam Chair, just follow up with Counselor Back? It was just a few years ago, did we not rezone property 388181 from commercial to institutional to add to this facility? I thought we did that. David wouldn't have that corporate history. But the present application is to renovate the existing 388173 to add 162 more beds. That's-
Sorry, just to clarify there, it is an addition, so I don't believe there's a renovation of the existing structure that would obviously need to be updated to kind of add that space on. I don't believe they're refinishing or anything.
So, Madam Chair, so where is the addition going on the back? Like, I'm trying to, again, just like Counselor Back, trying to visualize it. I'm looking at 388173, slide, page 40, digital page, and I'm just trying to figure out, is it going on 388181? No, it's going on the existing property where the current Andrews of Charlottetown is located, 388173. Can you just, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Michael. We have the, we have it up here, yeah, if you just want to, like, if you can point to whereabouts on that parcel of land.
It, it's a mix of both. So on 388173, the existing parcel, it would be, so if you're looking at that image that's on the screen now, north is north on the image. So on the north side of the existing structure, which is highlighted in red, or the existing parcel, which is highlighted in red, there will be an addition to the, to the rear, as we would call the rear, towards the residential properties behind, but more to the north on 388181. So if you're looking at access points to the addition, it would be at the rear portion towards the residential lots, and then the structure itself would be kind of on both parcels, 388181 and 388173. Access points to the front and rear of the current structure. And if we go back to the, the overhead design, the site plan, I think it's one, two forward?
I see it.
Perfect. So where the hatching is there, so if you're looking at the Malpec Road, access point on the front, there will be an addition over on the north side that comes towards the front. There is an addition that is in the existing structure, filling in an open grass area, and in the rear on, on the northern parcel, there is an extra element of it that's going to be in that back corner. So it's kind of taking up parts of the existing lot, parts of that, that northern lot, and kind of joining them together.
Yeah. And, Madam Chair, again, I'm, I'm at page 40, the digital 40. So there are properties along Trainer Street, and I know some of the homeowners, they were concerned the last time we went through this discussion about how it's creeping. So it's going to be, going to the north onto 388181, and on the existing 388173, it's going to be going out to the west. So with those additional beds, means additional visitors, what's the requirement for park? And where does the, did you mention about the park? Did I miss that?
So this is, this is, they're not seeking any variance for parking, so they would be able to provide it at the rate in which is required in the bylaw. The only, the only variance they're requesting by this application is the density requirement, because all site, they're planning on meeting height, they're planning on meeting setbacks, and they're planning on meeting parking.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Archbishop. How come they don't have to do a lot consolidation if they're, if they're, if they're going to be, the addition is going to butt out onto 388181?
They likely will have to in the future, but there's no, I don't believe in the bylaw there's anything that says that has to happen before a variance is proposed.
Oh, I see. So that'll come later.
Yeah, it, like, consolidation is a little bit more about, like, land ownership, like, you can, you can operate on two lots with this existing business in a lot of situations, but they will likely consolidate later in the process.
Okay, thank you, Archbishop. Do you have-
No, that's good. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify, how many rooms are going to be included in the addition? Because it says that currently they can have up to 146, and I understand that they're applying for up to 162. So is it just a difference between those two?
I believe they have less than that currently. I believe they're just over 100, but the rule is the 146. So the current lot size, as it is written, as it exists, if we were to review that against the bylaw, it would only allow 146 bedrooms. That would still be in addition to what they have there. I believe, like I said, I believe they're just over 100. But the 162 is what they hope to build on this parcel. So 146 currently allowable based off lot size, 162 is what they're hoping to build.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. The, so the department has encouraged the Planning Board to recommend to council to allow for this major variance and to increase the capacity to 162 bedrooms. Do I have anyone that wants to put that motion on the floor? Moved by Bobby, seconded by Counselor Back. So the resolution is on the floor. Any questions on the resolution? Sin, do you have any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next item. I believe we have Michael again for-
You're going to get tired of me.
So this is for a, I don't want to go too far. This is for, I'm trying to scroll, sorry.
Major variance for-
Yes, I know, I'm just trying to scroll. Jace, patience, impatience, japers. Okay, number six on the agenda, 9 Birch Hill Drive, PID 390491, request for major variance. Over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a major variance to allow for a legal garden suite to be established on the subject property within the existing detached structure, where the lot does not meet the minimum 0.5 acre minimum lot size as per the Zoning and Development Bylaw, and the structure is located closer to the main building than the bylaw's minimum 2.4 meter permitted requirement. If we can move to the next slide. The property is an interior residential lot, fronting on the north side of Birch Hill Drive. It is located in the single detached residential, R1L zone, within an established, single-detached neighborhood. The subject property is currently developed and contains an existing, single-detached dwelling, which is roughly 185 square meters. I do want to note that this is existing. So this garden suite has been in operation already. The applicants, a little while ago, submitted an application for a building permit to legalize the building permit aspects of the suite. So if we're looking at two aspects of our, our practice, the zoning element hasn't been in place, they've never sought approval for it, but they have had in place a garden suite already existing within 2.5 meters of their home and on this lot. So this was to seek to legalize that suite and have it meet building code. So if we go to the next slide. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on August 15, 2024, written notification was sent to property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property. A total of 40 letters were sent to residents advising them of the application and to solicit comments and feedback, and no responses were received. If we go to the next slide. So here you can see, this is applicant drawn, but it does give you context. So if you look at the dwelling from the, the site plan that was provided by a surveyor, you can see the, the hatch line is the existing residential dwelling. The to be relocated has already occurred, this is a past plan. The four meter, the four feet separation from the, on the north side of the house is the, the setback requirement, and that, I just want to note that that is between structures on this property, it's not a setback to another structure. The total lot size requirement is written in the bylaw, it's just about the size of the parcel that can accommodate a garden suite. And in this, in this case, like I said before, it's already been operating, so there are some other considerations to take into account. If we can go to the next slide there. Approval will allow this suite to be upgraded to meet building code, which is very important with suite requirements, ensuring that they can be, that they can meet building code for a safe space. It's an existing development, that's kind of a neutral point, and then approved permit will have to be submitted and accepted before construction, and that'll be reviewed for the building code aspects. I do want to note that the applicants have already confirmed that the separation requirement is able to be something they can meet in code. Code requirements don't normally get reviewed at the variance stage, but they have done the work to ensure that that one aspect, the thing that we're doing today, voting on that separation, that that can meet building code when they proceed to that next step. If we can go to the next slide. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject address, 9 Birch Hill Drive, PID 390591, be approved, to permit a reduced minimum lot size of 0.3 acres for a garden suite, whereas 0.5 acres are normally required, and to permit a reduced minimum setback distance between the garden suite and the- and the main building of one point two meters, three point nine four feet, whereas the minimum setback of two point four meters is otherwise required. And I'll pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Michael. Did I hear you correctly say that, you know, one of the, one of the reasons when you evaluated this application to approve it was because they had, didn't previously seek approval? So therefore, it's already there? Did I hear you say?
No, oh, oh, sorry, that's not the, that's not necessarily what I was saying. What I was saying is that the, the suite is there. And so in terms of kind of what we can do here, is moving a suite would not, would not be something we could be able to, to, to discuss here, because the existing suite is there. So, um, it's not like a, a new suite where we would be able to talk about, why don't you just move so that you have that separation? It's just existing. So it's kind of like scoping of what we're talking about.
So if I hear you correctly, what, what I'm hearing is that because no one's seeked any approval, now that's, doesn't come as a question. So does that mean that anybody can go ahead and do this on a smaller acreage and then hope to get approval later? Cause that, I don't know, maybe I'm hearing this incorrectly, Michael?
In terms of, um, that situation, this has been pre-existing prior to the changes to, um, garden suites. So in terms of, um, when this is, this appears to have been in existence prior to the nineteen ninety-nine passing of the bylaw. Um, so in this situation, it's not only pre-existing the, uh, the permitting process, it, it does appear to be, uh, pre-existing the requirement. Um, so in this case, I wouldn't necessarily view that as a likelihood, and I wouldn't view that as a, a poor precedent. I would, I would, in this case, it looks more like this is a well-intentioned, good, uh, push to legalize it from a building code perspective. And to give us slightly more context, this came in with an attempt to legalize it under building code. Um, and we had to inform them of the, uh, lack of legal standing for the actual zoning requirements. So though that, though that can be a, a fear or risk that we have, in this situation, I don't view it as such, because it is pre-existing bylaw.
So why wouldn't it be legal non-conforming use, Sin?
In this situation, it may be considered legally conforming use, but we're about to put a building permit on it. So when they go to do a building permit, they're making an alteration to a, uh, a space, which takes it out of legal, non-conforming status.
Yes, Madam Chair, I do know a little bit about it, because the existing property did have two units. They were never joined at the hip. Then the owner wanted to bring them together. As Michael said, they went and asked for the permits. Well, wait now, that's too small of a property, because it should be point five acres where you add an ADU or garden suite. So they're going through the process to legalize it. And that's where we're at today is, it could go to the non-conforming use, but they're just saying, give me the legal, legal authority to make it into a garden suite legit, and that's what we're doing today. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rosemary.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I would just suggest that the background information be modified somewhat to indicate that it's not really that it's not legally established. It, it's that it predates the bylaw requirements. I think that would be more accurate, because when I read this, it sounded to me as if the applicant had not gone through the initial process, which isn't really the case. So I think that documentation in the background should be modified.
I think that, I think that's, that's a great idea. Um, can that happen, David? Michael?
I, I can quickly answer that. So just the, the legally non-conforming piece, um, the way the bylaw is written, if they make an alteration to a legally non-conforming space, it does take it out of legally non-conforming status. So with the anticipated building permit to legalize the building code aspects of the suite, it would not be able to remain as a legally non-conforming space. Legally non-conforming does not allow, um, alterations or like future permitting, essentially, um, under legally non-conforming status. They would have to become bylaw compliant prior to those future steps. But absolutely, the, the context of this is really pressing and pertinent to this. Um, and, and, and I think that that's fair. But just to clarify that legally non-conforming status, uh, we are seeking this so that they will be pulled out of legally non-conforming status and be legal when they go to submit a building permit.
Right. But they're not really being pulled out of legal non-conforming, cause they don't have that status right now. That's what they would have had if they had done anything in nineteen ninety-nine. I think what Rosemary just means is that if that context was in the report, we wouldn't be asking the questions, and the, the owner, if they're listening, probably thinking that, you know, we're not supporting this, or we don't, but we just didn't understand all the information. So I think it's really important that that background information is there. I was glad that His Worship was here to shed a little light on it, so I thank you for that.
And Madam Chair, just a point of information, the owner is here. So if you wish to get some information from him. But he's been dealing with this issue probably for a year, so he's just coming to this point. It's come, it's finally come to where we're making a decision just so he can finish the build of a garden suite to his home. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So could, could this additional information be added to the report? So that when this, you know, if this board recommends to accept staff's recommendation, that it's in there for council to read?
Do, do you want us to come back to planning board with that?
No.
Is that, is that the process we would have to do?
No. I think you can just amend the report, can't you?
I would have to, I would have to step to Dave on this. It was my understanding that we'd have to go back through.
Alaner says you can.
Okay.
Amend the report for council.
Yeah.
Yeah, amend the report for council.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not gonna affect the decision. It's just more, the, the additional, I mean, information is, is power. So it just helps to, you know, for, for council to understand what we're doing here.
For sure. And just a, a, another quick note about, um, non-conforming status. Uh, going forward with this, uh, so, so if, if, in nineteen ninety-nine, they, or prior to nineteen ninety-nine, they had, had sought legalization from a bylaw, or after nineteen ninety-nine, they had sought legalization from a bylaw perspective, it, it would then be, uh, like, legal from that perspective. But since that has never happened, legally non-conforming status of the parcel, um, is not able to continue, uh, it, essentially that nineteen ninety-nine, since it was pre-existing that, the, uh, non-conforming nature of the parcel will be removed as soon as any alterations are made. And so with this, when, um, when we are considering it, we are not altering, um, their, their previous approvals. This is considered a new approval in the bylaw. We are kind of, we are going forward from that non-conforming. So it's, I, I just wanted to note that, since we had discussed it a little bit, this is considered their new legalization approval, and that we would use this as the basis for any permitting going forward.
Right. And so you can update the report, just to reflect that background?
Yeah, we absolutely can do that, and that will then be used going forward.
I'll move it, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. And His Worship has moved to accept staff's recommendation, and Jackie has seconded it. So the resolution is on the floor. If there's any questions on the resolution? Counselor Beck has a question.
I call the question. You can't, can't make comment now.
I was raising my hand at the same time.
Counselor Beck, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I understand if, um, this, uh, discussion topic predates this addition of council. It had been brought forth as a possible consideration at looking reducing lot sizes to accommodate EDUs or garden suites. But we currently don't have that, because we have not made any kind of changes of that. Um, I'm, I'm in agreement in general with gentle infill. And this would fall under gentle infill, correct? Um, my concern is this, is that if, uh, a unit, this unit in particular, or any other unit, gets approved, it can then be used as not for gentle infill, which is designed to increase our housing supply for long-term housing. And I think that was the original rationale for bringing in the reduction in lot sizes, was to increase our housing supply. If I understand this correctly, if we approve this, this, um, updated unit could fall under the STR, the newly implemented STR guidelines, which would allow for a resident owner to rent out the building on a short-term rental. So my concern with either this application or any other application going forward for this kind of invariance would be that it could say that it would be well-intended, or whatever it might be. However, it could lead to increasing the supply of short-term rentals, as opposed to increasing the long-term rental supply. So, um, I'm, 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 I'm reticent to support it for that reason. Because, um, until we have a little bit more assurance or a little bit more of an understanding as to whether it will actually increase our housing supply, um, I'm, I'm not really comfortable in, in supporting it. So I don't see anything in there that would indicate me to change my mind on that. So, um, for that reason, um, I'm not going to support the motion as, as put forth. And it's, it's for that very reason right there.
Thank you for that, Counselor Beck. And one thing I can say is, the changes that we made to our zoning and development bylaw that gave a definition to a short-term rental, um, did permit in an accessory suite, our garden suite, um, uh, that the, that could be used as a short-term rental. However, only if the, the resident in the main part of the house had to be in, on the property at all times. They can't take off to the cottage, they can't, they have to be there if they're using it as a short-term rental. Now, I don't know how we would police that, but that is what our zoning and development bylaw says right now. So I'm just making a comment on what, what that defined use is right now. And so you are correct, there is no, there, there is no way to say for sure if this garden suite or any other would be used as long-term or short-term. Um, cause unfortunately, it is not in our power as a board or as a committee to, um, to, to base our decision on that. And Michael, if you had any other comment on that? Or Donna, if you're online, is the guru of the short-term rental, um, defined reasons in the zoning and development bylaw? Or my, or David? Or nobody?
I can go. We, we do review it as part of the STR applications, um, but it, 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 it's, it, it is one of those things where it may be unenforceable in practice, but we do, do our best intention to ensure that it is a, uh, occupied by owner, um, uh, structure. Uh, that being said, uh, I'll pass it over to Donna or David if they have further things to say.
And I was well aware of that, that I, I, I knew that that was the case. Um, but it goes back to the enforceability piece. It's complaint-driven. And if there are no complaints, then it just continues on to, to go that way. And, um, so I, I, I was aware of that, so it's, it wasn't required clarification.
Thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. And then Jackie, and then His Worship.
That was my point. I thought the only way we really have any control over that is if we go back and amend what our current STR regulations and bylaws are. So really, for me, I can't, I can't not support this application for those reasons, because I don't see how it, how it fits into that for this particular application.
Jackie?
And just echoing that, is that I think that's more of an issue having to do with the STR regulation, the enforceability of it, the requirements around that, rather than this application. Like, if you're allowed to run an STR in a garden suite, and this application, it, it, they don't even need to indicate that. If, if the homeowner is living in the, in the adjacent home, they're allowed to do it. And I'm all for, uh, increasing the supply of long-term housing and recognize the importance of that. But it's not an issue with this application, it's an issue with the short-term rental regulation, in my opinion.
Thank you very much for that, Jackie, and Your Worship.
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, the current situation right now is the homeowner at nine Birch Hill can rent his home out as, as an STR. So that does, you know, he, he has an option there. But as you said, with a garden suite or an ADU, the principal owner still has to be in his or her home and, and then rent it out. And this is why I'm concerned, Madam Chair, about the one property and four units. These are the arguments that are coming up now, right? So are we forward or we not? This is, I, I call it the step towards getting to that one over, one property number, four units. And remember the discussions we had about the point five acre and above, where you could add an ADU? Aaron Stavert made it very clear many times, drop it down to point three or point three four or lower, you can increase the number of units by seventeen hundred. This is what it's doing. This is part of our plan that we, the three of us have been involved in the last four or five years of planning. So I'm for this application, because it's talking about tense, density, and it's also talking about someone that said, I have a non-conforming use, I wanna legalize it, and I'm going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. And Counselor Beck, and just, just to remind everyone, as Jackie said, we have an application in front of us, and an STR rules and regulations is a whole greater conversation than this application that we have before us right now. But over to you, Counselor Beck.
I understand what we're trying to accomplish with all that. I'm just saying that at the end of the day, there's a real risk that we could not get the desire, we could not achieve the desired goal that we're looking to, that we're looking to achieve. Talking about seventeen hundred units or whatever, they could fall under different, and different rules or regulations, and then we're not achieving what we're trying to do. I understand the whole idea and the rationale behind gentle infill and whatnot, and trying to increase our housing supply. I'm just a little eerie that it may not, we may not end up achieving what we're looking to accomplish. That's my concern.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Your Worship.
Just one other. Look, with change, there will be risk. And again, going down that road, one property, four units, other municipalities, Oakville has already said no to it. You have to give the money back. So let's be focused on the long term.
And let's, and thank you for that. So we have an application on the floor. Um, all those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Sin, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair.
On the res, on, do you have a question on the resolution? We're not discussing short-term rental licensing, um, rules and regulations anymore.
Yes, I agree that, with that, with that, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify one thing, uh, and this is from the planner, that this, you know, suite is already in existence, right? The structure exists.
That's correct.
Okay. So irrespective of, uh, you know, whether we recommend this to the council, and if hypothetically, if the council accepts or rejects it, the structure exists, and there is no legal way. It's not like if the council rejects it, the structure is going to be, get demolished. Am I correct on that?
Well, that's a, that's a great question, Sin. I mean, according to, according to the way the rules are written, then it would have to be removed. But does that really happen? I don't know. So Michael, can you speak to that?
Yeah, that's, that's the real, uh, if we were identifying as out of risk, that's one I, I do worry about is, is, this is a, um, this doesn't meet building code right now, right? And so like, a, a real risk of, uh, any enforcement is that, I, I'm not sure about what, we don't have our bylaws, so right here. But, uh, in terms of like, what that enforcement looks like, sometimes that means removing a cook, a cooking appliance. Sometimes that means kind of minor adjustments to the space, which still doesn't bring that towards building code, uh, compliance. So, uh, in terms of like, this application and, and kind of centering this discussion on what kind of we can do in this room, uh, the, the, the goal of, of legalizing, uh, a, a suite that may not currently meet building code can be considered one of the goals of what we're doing here, of, of what, of what this application is seeking for. Uh, and, and in terms of what would have to be removed, uh, it may be able to be something where it can just become a legal, uh, an illegal suite again. Uh, if, if it is removal of, say, a cooking appliance, or removal of, uh, it from, from an STR website or something along those lines, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have continued enforcement of this going forward, uh, or enforcement that's going to be non-complaint-based. Uh, I, I, I think in terms of what, in, in terms of what this application is seeking to do, we're hoping to get building permit compliance, building code compliance for an existing suite, so that we don't have kind of a potentially dangerous suite on our hands that could potentially be moved very quickly back into operating as a suite. So that, that's just kind of a, a piggyback and a second step of what Sin was saying there.
Great. And probably should be added into the information for council, so that we don't, um, have this conversation again, because we are dating back to something from nineteen ninety-nine. So if we have no more questions? no more questions? Question called. All those in favor? Sin, are you in favor?
I'm in favor, Madam Chair.
Those opposed. Okay, we have one opposed, and the rest are in favor. So, thank you for that, and I think that's the end of Michael's reports.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Thank you. Moving on to our next report, 171-181 Kensington Road. And that is David Gundrum, our manager of development planning. And this is for a request to re-recommend to council to proceed to public consultation concerning a request to rezone an unidentified subject property from single-detached residential to medium-density residential townhouse. So, over to you, David.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as noted, the following application before the board tonight is a request to rezone the subject properties identified as PID numbers 385930, 385948, and 555177, also known as 171 to 181 Kensington Road. The request is to rezone the subject properties from the single-detached residential R1L zone to the medium-density residential townhouse R3T zone, to allow for future development of twelve townhouse units on the combined site. Properties are located on the west side of Kensington Road at the northwest corner of the intersection with Hemlock Drive, and they are located approximately eighty meters or two-hundred-sixty feet northwest of the boundaries of the Belvedere Golf Course, which is the open-space zone, open-space is-owned area shown here. Subject sites are shown here in red. Again, they're located within the R1L zone, adjacent to and in the vicinity of primarily single-detached residential development. The subject properties are each developed with their own single-detached dwelling on three individual lots. Following is a site plan. This is showing Kensington Road to the south here, Hemlock Drive to the south, and the proposed access points would be off of Hemlock Drive to the south, and Kensington Road to the east of the site shown here. The image is inverted from north as shown. So, there'd be three blocks of townhomes, four units here, two units here, and then a block of six shown here. So, our review of the application to date, some positives would be that the rezoning would enable facilitation of a compact urban forum and infill development to create medium-density housing to meet future needs for the community. The property is in proximity to many complementary and supporting businesses, services, and amenities, as well as parks, daycares, places of worship, and public transit. A neutral comment is that the development require a building development permit upon variance approval. A noted shortcoming is that the proposed development could impact the existing prevailing single-detached dwelling development fabric of the surrounding area, and would displace three existing residences, established residences in the area. So, our recommendation at this point, we've found that the proposal meets the technical requirements of the zoning bylaw and meets many stated objectives of the official plan. It is the opinion of Planning and Heritage Department that in accordance with Regulation 3.10.2, Amendments to the Bylaw on Rezoning of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, that the property owner has submitted sufficient information for an evaluation and rezoning, for an evaluation of the rezoning request rather to proceed. Therefore, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to city council to approve their request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning request, which would be to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from single-detached residential R1L zone to medium-density residential townhouse R3T zone for the properties located at 171 to 181 Kensington Road, PID numbers 385930, 385948, and 555177. So, that is a summary of the request, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any questions that members of the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And so, staff's recommendation for this, for today, is to just proceed to public consultation. However, I will open it up to anyone if they have any questions for now. We, this will be back to us again for any other questions. Go ahead.
Just going to move that we accept staff's recommendation to go to public consultation and get more information from the residents in Ward, too.
So, that's moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Bob Kenny. Question on the resolution, Your Worship?
No question?
Oh.
Question called.
Okay, question called. All those in favor? Sin, are you in favor of moving this on to council for public consultation?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to our final report for the day. This is our manager of development planning again, and this is 55 Pope Avenue, unaddressed properties, Brackley Point Road, PID's 1173640 and 1173657, request to recommend to public consultation. And that's over to you, David.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And just to repeat, echo from what the chair mentioned. So, this is a request to rezone the identified subject properties, which are shown in red here, PID 1173640, 1173657, which front onto Brackley Point Road. 55 Pope Avenue is actually the adjacent site here, PID 452839, which contains an existing commercial daycare center in the building shown here on the air photo. Again, the request is to rezone the identified properties from the R1L single-detached residential zone into the institutional zone to allow for the expansion of an outdoor amenity area, as well as parking areas which are associated with that noted commercial daycare center located at 55 Pope Avenue. The properties are located, as noted, along the east side of Brackley Point Road, and they are contiguous with the site at 55 Pope Avenue, which is shown here in the institutional zone, and which contains an existing commercial daycare center. Again, subject properties are located with the R1L zone, and are adjacent to and in the vicinity of primarily existing single-detached residential development. I'll note that the subject properties, the two subject properties are currently vacant, undeveloped, and contain no buildings or structures, as was noted on the air photo. This slide is an illustration of the proposed development. So, I'll note for members of the board, Pope Avenue is here at the bottom of the image. The existing commercial daycare is shown here. And the proposal is to rezone these, these portions of land, these two parcels right here, to allow for the expanded parking area with a new road access onto Brackley Point Road to the west, and an expanded outdoor play area shown here for the children who attend the daycare. Just a summary of our analysis to this point, some positives regarding the application is that the proposed rezoning would enable expansion of existing daycare use, which would help enhance a community need that is currently in high demand throughout the city. The property is within an established residential neighborhood, and is therefore located close to residential uses on a local street that could benefit from the expansion and enhancement of the commercial daycare use. A neutral comment is that a building development permit would be required to enable the change of use of the subject parcels following the variance approval, which would have to be acted on within two years of the approval of the variance. Shortcoming is that the proposed rezoning could cause some slight increases to traffic flows during certain times of day due to the new road access point, which is proposed onto Brackley Point Road. So, in some summation, we are recommending, we are encouraging that the Planning Board recommend to council that the following rezoning request for the unaddressed parcels identified as PID numbers 1173640 and 1173657, being adjacent to 55 Pope Avenue, PID 452839, proceed to public consultation, and that is to rezone the subject properties from single-detached residential R1L to the institutional zone in order to facilitate expansion of an outdoor children's play area and parking area that would be associated with the existing commercial daycare center located on an abutting property identified as 55 Pope Avenue, PID 452839. So, that is a summary of the request, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? This is for staffs recommending to move on to council to proceed to a public consultation. So, does anyone have any questions? Your light is on, Your Worship. Do you have a question?
It's hard button, do they?
Yeah. So, if there's no question, does anybody want to move this resolution? Moved by Lee, seconded by Jackie, that we move this on to council with accepting staff's recommendation to proceed to public consultation. Any question on the resolution? Sin, do you have any questions on this resolution?
No question, Madam Chair.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
In favor.
Okay. That is unanimous. That's wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Okay, final item on the agenda would be any new business, introduction of new business, seeing none, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Chris Fournay. All those in favor? Wonderful.
In favor.
Thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening.